I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, every and just.
All right, welcome everybody to the June 5th meeting. We're back to the evening meetings. All right, minutes of May 29th. We have a motion to approve the minutes of May 29th. We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, 6:05, it's actually 6:04. We're going to introduce ordinance 2-2024 fiscal year 2025. Budget is presented for approval. I have a, we had a little bit of technical difficulties, but in front of the commissioners, I wanted to highlight, I think everyone had this for at least a week at review. And if you'll see, our general fund revenue is going to be $19,712,562. Our largest portion of our expenditures for the town certainly goes to public safety, which is over 43%. So that goes for public safety. Our adopted property tax rate will remain the same for fiscal year 25. And...
Personal property is the same too?
Personal property is the same, that is correct. So our tax rate is staying in at 0.6356, same as fiscal year 24. The business personal, business personal property tax rate will stay the same as fiscal year 24. The trash collection will stay the same as it was in fiscal 24. The water and sewer rates will be the same as they were in fiscal year 24. The, I guess the key things of the budget is that there's a cost of living based on the collective bargaining agreement with the EDD sworn officers of 3.9% COLA. And there's a 3% increase this year on their anniversary date for a total of 6.9% salary increase for the Elton Police Department. All non-s sworn, all non-police employees, which is the rest of the town, we have a 3% for the merit increase, and then we're also have a 6% cost of living in this budget. So it'd be a total of 9% if everyone did okay on their evaluations. The projected healthcare increase was in, touched in on this budget. And I think that is the key highlights unless I'm missing something Lou?
The increase in the healthcare would be 9%.
It was 9%, I saw on here, it was a 9% increase in healthcare. Any questions from the board on what I just highlighted? We're keeping the capital expenses down to a minimum this year in this budget. But overall, I think one of the reasons why we wanted to go with more of a generic budget for fiscal 25 was that we've gone through our, we've had some hiccups here, quite frankly. We are now onto a new finance director, and Tamika's doing a wonderful job. But during this period, we not only had a, Steve Repo, our finance director retired, but one of our, probably our key employee Beth Moran passed away in February. Was it January or February? Was it April?
Yeah.
April. Wow. That's how long sun can get in here. So the, so it's been a little bit of a challenge along with the new computer system that we implemented in fiscal 24 at the same time all this was happening. So we've put together the puzzle the best that we can, and I'm sure that we're going to be 100% here in a very short window. So that's kind of where we're at with all that, but I think in full disclosure, I think that's the information that needs to be out there. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 2-2024 fiscal year 2025 budget as presented for approval?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, are you asking for an approval of the fiscal year 25?
She'll have to do an amendment to approve that 6%. And it's recommended that the COLA be applied to all employees. Of course, the police are covered by the collective bargaining agreement, the other remaining employees expect the COLA increase.
But you didn't need a motion on that, you didn't need anything?
Yes.
You do. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve fiscal year 2025 6% COLA for employees?
So move.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Administration of oath of office, we got a couple guys here that we need to get sworn in this evening. So we had an election, let me make sure I get this right. We had an election in May and Commissioner Pinear, Commissioner Givens, both were reelected, and tonight is a very important night that we can get to swear them in again. So I'd like to ask both of you to step down and I'll read you the oath of office. Okay, let me get where I can have the light up. You good there? Okay, can you see us all right? Everyone good? All right. Can I don't vote at the same time or one of staff? Could you get over here a little bit instead of...
Don't say my name by mistake.
All right, here we go. Please raise your right hand.
Do you swear that I will support?
You swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful. Bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality.
Without partiality.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of Commissioner.
Of Commissioner.
According to.
According to.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Here, signing section right here. Let's see. Charles, this one's yours. Go ahead and sign them on you. So I can tell you that Commissioner Givens now is, he's finished, he's starting his next four-year term, and he was first elected in 1994. So it's been consecutive, and that's been 30 consecutive years right now, which is, wow, what's that tell you? Commissioner Pinear was elected in 2004, and Commissioner Pinear has just finished up his 20th year as Town Commissioner, going in through '24. So thank you all. I think a lot of times that, we've seen a lot, you know, I've been, Jean on my far right, Jean is just finishing up her 20th year with the town of Elton. Her term was a little bit staggered, right? It was a little staggered, we had a few years that she was not on the board, and with mine, I'm entering, I'm finishing up my 18th year, and two more years, and this will be the last you'll see me up here as mayor. So I'm going to turn the reins over. Look at that, I'm being happy about that. It's all good or bad, it doesn't really matter, but I got two more years to get everyone excited, I guess. And Rob is on year five, so he'll get elected again in two years, and he'll be on his way to nine or 10 years, so that'd be great. So there's a lot of years of experience up here where I can say that we're all Eltonians. I can also say that two of us went to Bohemia Manor High School, and we have three that two that went to, you didn't go to Elton, you went to Carver. And we had two from Elton High, but I would almost say I'm the only one that was born in Union Hospital. You were born in Union Hospital? All right. You were born in Union? What the heck? All right, I was the only mayor that ever be born in Union Hospital. There we go. And I know that to be true, because I know Jim Kraus was born in Florida, and Joe Fasona I know wasn't here in Elton. Now, I think the rest of them were born in their houses. So listen, it's time for a presentation. Is Jameer Williams here? Jameer, we'd like to make a presentation. Commissioner Givens, would you like to make that presentation? Give us a little discussion about Jameer.
Jameer, you want to just stand where you are, and after I'm done, I'm going to have the board come down and take a snapshot with you, and a check to the mayor to give to you. And for everybody that's new to the scholarships that Talon Upson gives out, we've been giving it out for seven years. Fortunately, the Talon Upson High School has a committee that always selects people for us, and they have done a great job. And one of the recipients of this year is Jameer, who I met at the awards assembly about three weeks ago, and we have another young lady who is not here tonight. Jameer brings very good standards with him. He was in 10% of his class of 221 at Elton High School. He's in Elton, oh, I'm sorry, the National Honor Society. He plans to go to the University of Maryland this fall to major in software engineering. You know what that is, Lois?
I'll tell you one thing, it's important.
Now, of course, he wants to become a professional in that line of work. And what's really great, if you haven't been in school in a long time, there's so many ways when you go to high school now that you can graduate. It used to be a long time ago, you graduate academic, you graduate general, but now you can have college courses imputed into your schedule, you can go to VOTAC. But with Jameer, it's great because he's off to a good start. He had his AA degree before he had his high school diploma degree. Now, why is that so? Why is that so? Because he was in a dual enrollment at Elton High School. He had general studies and an Erle's College Academy. So he was taking college courses at the time that he was going to school at Elton High School. And because Cecil College had their graduation before his high school, he already has an AA degree.
Wow.
So that's very important when you go to school because you really have to step in the door. I've seen many people who have the AA, only takes them two years to get through. Often times, sometime when you have your AA, you go to college, it becomes a little difficult because now in college you gotta play ball and try to juggle all the credits that they have into whatever. But no matter what, you are a success even now, and you'll be a success moving forward. And I'm going to ask the mayor if he would present you with this $500 check, and I ask the board if they would come down and take a picture with you, and I told you, you can go home after that.
Jameer, come on up here, we're going to put you right here in front. Right here in front, put you right there, get here with those smiles.
You're a show-off, aren't you?
Jameer, here's your check. Louis is going to snap a picture of us.
There we go. I'm using the best software I got. When I was in high school, computers took out whole roofs.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So one of the things that we did do in the budget this fiscal year 25 is that we've always had two $500 scholarships that we give out, and we decided that we're going to increase them to $1,000 each moving forward. So next year's recipients will get $1,000 for each one. So if you have any kids out there that are going, get them to apply. Commissioner Givens does a great job of picking them out.
You think we can get Earl in the schoolhouse and get them away?
Listen, I don't think we can do that.
Took me 35 to get my A.
Earl has a degree in B.S. So introduction of the Elton Alliance, come on down and show us what we have, are we doing a presentation?
We're doing a presentation, let me get my...
All right, very good.
And Margie, give me a quick sec, I'm going to share a screen with you. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you to start your video. Already allowed shared screen, so if you hit shared screen.
Sorry, I have my army of tech people here to help me figure out how to make this work, so.
You did great though.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight, Mayor Commissioners. I am going to go through PowerPoint. I would like, as I introduce our committee members, please stand, we have some of them here tonight. We are the Design Committee and under, relative under the Elton Alliance. Hi, I'm Margie Blinston, I am the chairperson of the committee. We have Jean Brumel, who is our Elton Town Commissioner on the committee. Rick Cunningham, who could not be here tonight, he's the owner of Elton Music Hall. Ray Frederique, she is the Elton Alliance's eighth board member liaison and an Elton property owner. We have Judy Hart, volunteer, community advocate, and former citizen of the year. Pat Opel, volunteer, community advocate, former citizen of the year. Tracy Rammels. Cecil Bank, relationship manager, senior vice president. And Brianna Testan-Lucas, who could not be here tonight, but she is the owner of Sunny's Deli. My screen, there we go, I can't see what's up on my screen. Elton Alliance serves as an affiliate of Main Street America and the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And as an affiliate, the Alliance is tasked with managing transformation strategies. A transformation strategy articulates a focused deliberate path to revitalizing or strengthening a downtown or commercial district's economy. Our focus, the focus of the Design Committee is to support the community's transformation by assisting in the enhancement of the physical and visual elements of downtown while capitalizing on the unique assets that set the commercial district apart. The Design Committee objectives are to identify areas in the designated Main Street District, Business District, in need of attention in regard to public safety, light, and general aesthetics. The submission of a report to the Mayor and Commissioners, providing the following information regarding areas of concern. And that will include the property location, the property owner or responsible party, and photographs with suggested reparations. As of this date, the Design Committee has met to determine key objectives. We want the support of small businesses, as well as encourage them to assist in the beautification of the Elton Business District. And we'll say, we've already got several people that are like, we're going to plant flowers, we're going to, so we already have involvement in that, we're very excited. We want to effect changes to the town charter to reflect building owners and businesses being held accountable for the overall safety, look, and viability of their establishments. And our future plans are to work with the Historical Society to include initiatives celebrating the historic character of the town. We've already taken a walking tour of downtown and started the task of assessing areas needing improvement. So we've done West Main Street so far, we're meeting next week to do East Main Street, and we want to submit the report that we put together with all of the buildings that we've assessed to the Mayor and Commissioners with the details and the findings of our walk-through of the downtown district. So we hope to have that for you by the end of next week, since we will be doing the walk-through on Monday. And I'd like to know when it would be good for us to come back before you with the report. Would you prefer that we do it at a town meeting? Would you like us to, you know, what does that look like to you?
Well, I guess my, is it going to be more about the... I guess your walk-through more about safety, is it about design?
It's about design, it's about safety, it's about light, it's about the overall aesthetic of what the town looks like.
I would say that you bring it back to us.
Okay.
Right, and I think it's important to do it in a meeting, public meeting. And, but I would also think though, at some point it'll probably go to, maybe we'll meet with either the Planning Commission or the Planning Department, the Zoning Department, and I'm sure even the Police Department will be involved in this also. But I appreciate you guys taking and running with this because it's, I think it's in the right hands now.
Great, great, I appreciate that. I did want to make mention that I'm retiring at the end of June.
What?
Yes, I'm retiring on June 28th from the Elton Alliance, so I'll be moving into a volunteer position as the chairperson of this committee. And I'm going, you'll still see me, I'm going to be volunteering at, you know, events and things like that, but I will be leaving town for a few weeks, you know, the big retirement tour, going to see my kids in Seattle on the 28th, I'll be back on the 17th, but I would like to get in with the report before I leave at the end of the month, so we can get moving on this and get some traction.
Perfect. I would also like to ask officially the Elton Alliance to help us with a, we're moving forward with enforcement on parking meters, but I think that the business people need to have some input down there, right? And we've gone through this a million times, and we can't win, quite frankly, you can't win. Because I'm at the point where I'd rather do kiosks myself, I'd like to do a kiosk, and if a business owner wants to park in front of their business and pay for all-day parking, so be it. But it's not about the revenue, it's about trying to make people feel more about coming into, coming into our town. So if you don't have some type of enforcement, then the perception is there's never a parking spot in the, in the key area is where you want to park, so I'm going to ask for some help here.
What do you see as our involvement with that initiative, Mayor?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to know, you know, we went through this, it seems like we go through it about every couple of years, and there's no parking meters on most of Main Street, right? Or maybe not on Main Street, I guess, all the way up through.
By courthouse.
Or the courthouse. And I know that we, I was sure that we increased the hourly number to three hours on Main Street, but someone mentioned it was two hours.
It used to be three.
So it's three in front of North Street and two after.
See, I think that we need to, we probably need to understand where it's at, because I thought we did it for the downtown, it was three hours, but maybe it was three hours at the hospital.
Who's three, who's three on Main Street?
Who's three?
It's three in front of like Rob's, like four North Street, and then after that it comes to two.
Very good. So I think that we just need to get together and work all the, I'd like to see what you guys recommend on the parking. Do you want to see longer parking times, or would you rather have meters and so forth?
Well, I will say that the committee's main focus right now is the overall aesthetics. So that's what we've been focusing on with walking the Main Street, looking at the buildings. I mean, there is, there's light. There, there is the building right next to the Men Shelter has a broken window that, it's a glass window with a big hole in it, and that building is just dilapidated and falling apart. So we want to identify these building owners and hold them accountable.
Yes.
For the way these buildings look, so that if you don't enter Main Street with this blighted, disblighted buildings as you head down the street. And we're talking arming, we're talking general maintenance and cleanup of areas, and so you'll see that in our report when we put that in, because we've identified all of those places.
Perfect.
I think it's just a success that, you know, this has just been pushed to other areas of the town eventually, but I will tell you, I took the walking tour with this group, and when you're driving through town, you know, and you're driving at a certain speed, you do not see what is truly there, but walking was a real eye-opener.
And especially if you see it every day. We're talking about people that come as visitors to our town that might not see it, and the first thing they see is a blighted building when they turn on the Main Street, or they see dead trees, or, you know, so these are things that we want to put a focus on that paints our town in the best light.
And I think too that we ought to, we're going to have to eventually talk about enforcement. Now, what do we do with all this information that you gather?
Exactly, we have to come up with solutions, actually, we come up with all that.
Most definitely.
That's the hard part, but we're willing to work.
And that's what we hope to effect a change in the town charter, so that people are held in, business owners and building owners especially, we're talking about the building owners that don't live anywhere near here, and they're collecting money from the people that run upstairs, and they're not doing anything to take care, maintain their property. So that's what we would like to see, and empty buildings too, that we can do something to impose fines. If your building is left empty for a long period of time, you need to, you know, be motivated to do something about it better than in Elton.
Perfect.
Okay? Thank you.
So Mayor, I'd like to say that aside from this, you know, let's take an example on the parking issue, to make sure that we can have some hold on that initiative. I know at the last meeting you had asked the Alliance to attend with the identification of reparking in the town, which we're going to be doing. So we'll keep these conversations going with that as well, and we'll be involved with that.
Thank you.
Of course, business owners have to have some ownership in what changes we make as well, because I've talked to you often about some of these people who have businesses downtown, they just pull right in front and give no regard to anybody else, so hope that pays. And two, and this is second round, and two, Margie, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done, I always saw you as sometime Murray Joe's right hand. And do you remember all the changes that we made on Main Street, Howell Street, trying to get traffic down here? And she with the bump-out curbs and a lot of things that we have, but thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question back there, and I'm going to acknowledge it, so please stand up and tell us your name, place, and your address.
Carol Grasso, 704 Elton Boulevard. I know it's been a while since we had meters, but I experienced a couple of that incidents with department meters, and a lot of them didn't work, so you tried to put plenty in and didn't take it, or they were jammed, and then you still had... And then you still end up with a parking ticket. What's the resolution for those problems?
Well, listen, it's a great question. And that's why I felt that we should go to a kiosk and get rid of the meters, right? Then you park by plate, or however you do it, and then there's no questions about it. So, I would say that it was probably a good idea when we painted a lot of the meters, but they also... We were trying to work with the Arts Council to beautify, or show some artistry or some creativity. But some of the areas did get painted shut, and we do recognize that. One of the challenges that we have with meters in general is that you can't get the parts like you used to. Now, I know Michelle took it upon herself, and she was able to find some parts that we could start reworking some of these meters. So, reworking a good meter is an option for us now. But it's either... I think that that's just the amount of time it takes to collect the money, wrap the money, or count the money, and get it over to the financial institution, who some of them don't even want to change anymore. But there's a lot of businesses that want it. But there's a lot of effort in, believe it or not, collecting that, those quarters. So, we are working on that. But I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Bid opening. Dan, you wanna come down and do the bid opening? We've got Project 2024, 001, Road Restoration Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. The bid results for Project 24001, Road Restoration Project. We got two bidders.
Open them up.
Yep.
You go.
Thank you.
Road Restoration, the first... I'm gonna do the overall bids.
Yep.
I'll go through the numbers one that way. After the bids, I'd like to ask the board for... After engineer's review and after budgetary review, if you have any contracts, I'll give you the numbers first, okay?
Okay.
First contract is Tinslet Construction, 2059 Classy Highway, Northeast Maryland. They're bidding for all five projects. So, that's 1037,185.
Gotcha.
Second bid is Ditch Hollow Contracting Company. Ditch Hollow Contracting Company, 1110 West Classy Highway. Their bid for all five projects is $748,314. 748,314. You gotta ask the board for permission to, after engineer's review and after looking at the budgetary thing, if you have any contracts, we can refer over.
Okay, very good. I think... How much should we budget for this, Dan?
Oh, that's why we have to start looking at different projects. Right now, we budgeted probably about half a million, half to six hundred thousand to start out with. With some stuff probably up the same way. So, that's why some of these things will have to be evaluated.
Yeah, I would say that... Are we meeting next Wednesday? We don't have anything on the agenda, do we?
Oh, yes, we do.
We do?
No, we're not.
Okay. So, we'll make that decision next Wednesday. Is that okay?
But you said, you did say that they can be settled out?
Yes. The way this is set up is to give a little more detail on the road project is... The main project is the West High Street. The West High Street was the main project they ran the bid on. The next five, the next four, which are St. Charles Street, Church Street, Whitehall Road, and Hill Hall Road, are ant-alterants. So, we put them up saying, so depending how the budgets turned out and how much we had, we could pick and choose to see what's going on the same way. So, that's how we did this particular one.
Sounds nice.
So, I know. But the main thing was West High Street. And that's all the cobblestone and the brick in front of the hospital. That's the main thing. We watched and coordinated with the hospital as well. They're aware of that coming out.
Dan, what are your plans for that cobblestone in front of the hospital?
I have the ball case right there.
Who's gonna remove it?
Contractor.
They are.
Yeah. Yeah, contractor, yeah. Contractor do it.
So, it is gonna be removed?
Yeah.
And what, paved?
Yes. Exactly. The brick will get off. The cobblestones will all be taken. All of that.
And maybe when we go to bid or we go to discuss this some more, could you just enlighten us on maybe the game plan that you and the hospital have come up with for traffic?
Yeah, actually, I can do that right now, before this one. Basically, we... The project's gonna be cut into two pieces. The first piece will be... How it actually happens doesn't matter. It'll be signaling to the front entrance. They'll take care of that. They'll remove the cobblestone there, put a base course of asphalt in. And they'll flip over it, do the other half from Bow Street up to where the entrance is, and then rip it out. Again, take out the cobblestone, take out the brick, and they'll do asphalt the same thing. They'll put the base course in, and then they'll come back at the very end. They'll do all the surface course. Now, the process to get started is gonna be the concrete. The first thing we'll do is the concrete, just for the sidewalks. That's gonna be the surface side. And we'll do it one half at a time, so the pictures will start that.
Does he just decide the direction? The traffic's gonna be going whenever it's be done? Because people use the high street.
No, just basically, we're just gonna cut it. We're just gonna cord it to the hospital. We're just gonna cut it off. And it should be two-way traffic, just gonna be a little tighter length. So, only gonna be half the high street at a time.
You're gonna stop traffic coming through, stop traffic? Is that what you're saying?
We're cording out the hospital. We told the hospital the plan. They said they were fine with cutting the project in half. You know, they'll be fine the same way. So, it's gonna wait until they can... They take the two-way, just the two-way. It shouldn't be entirely the high street.
It shouldn't take any time to do that job anyhow?
It'll be pretty fast. I mean, we just, you know, rip it out.
What would you estimate, Jeff?
Not sure yet, until we start digging into it. That was the tricky part, because the cobblestones, we know they're sitting on. We got the concrete fans, we'll probably have to rip out. So, we start going, they go quick, maybe a couple of weeks. I have to start... We have to talk to the contractor and let him see if it's actually a good time to do it. I mean, just to see what their game plan's gonna be also. Because a lot of times, I don't know how fast. I don't know what kind of resources they have. We can find out more information, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Want to do the grass-cutting one?
We got Brian to put that with me. We got to talk about the project.
The only comment I wanna mention about that section of the hospital, if I remember correctly, we had that closed down for months when they put the cobblestone in and everyone went around it. So, and then there was a time after that that they closed it, because Mike Sack was the CEO at Union Hospital. And his game plan was to... He wanted to close that whole road off back into that. Did you want it to dampen? He wanted it dampened, that's correct. And then they did the traffic flow around it. It really didn't interfere anything. I didn't think it interfered with anything.
The main thing, the hospital's on board with the whole concept. So, that's why, you know, I talked to the maintenance department, the CEO, they could find that way.
Very good.
Dan, when we do, when we finish the job, is it up to us to determine how many handicap parking spots could be on the street?
I have to get back to you on that one, I'm not sure.
I mean, quite frankly, their handicap options are not abundant over there. I was just curious, you know, there's two areas that people do park. If they had control or not.
We could look into it as soon as the change order. We could look into that thing. It's not...
Oh, it has to be...
All we're doing is the road itself. The main thing is the access, coming out from Bow, so people can get up to the hospital, that's the key, the sidewalk. Those are the things that exist. Those are the rights to do that.
Okay. So, if you change, then you have to change the sidewalk?
Yeah, we do. Exactly. I have a question, but I'll have it in a minute.
I was just curious. Thank you.
All right, landscaping. Grass-cutting.
Project 2402, grass-cutting, so we're gonna make a service. For this particular project, we've had two bidders. Open them up and see what we have up here. Chris Woods, Ivy Hill Nursery Company. They're from Blair, Maryland. I'll give you these fees as a monthly cost. Ivy Hill Nursery Company, they're in Blair, Maryland. We've got this particular job is broken into two different pieces. We've got total open spaces, and then we got total store owner management costs. The open spaces are addressed weekly, and the store owner management costs will be addressed bi-week. So, the cost for the... For every week of total open spaces from Ivy Hill is $3,503.18. The total bi-weekly cost for Ivy Hill for the bonds would be $15,292. And the total monthly cost for every four cuts would be $44,596.72. The monthly cost is $4,4596.72.
I ask the board not to make a decision tonight.
Oh, boy. We need a lot more information.
Second ones, day countries?
Don't hold off on any decision.
Okay, okay. Total open spaces, weekly cost will be $5,959. Day country, again, they cut this weekly. The store owner management bi-weekly cost will be $5,582. Total monthly cost there will be $34,600. So, 34,600 for day country.
Dan, I know we're not voting tonight, but when you do go to vote on this, could you give me the numbers of how much it cost us before we bid this out?
I'll do an analysis with the board to see if we hire people versus the cost of the contract. And my gut instinct is it'd be cheaper to hire somebody and to pay this amount of money for the contract.
Well, you'll do it all, right? Manpower, wages, benefits, insurance?
Equipment.
Oh, and the equipment.
And the fuel.
And the fuel. There you go. I mean, are we... And what's our capital plan anyway for replacing this equipment?
Equipment-wise, you... I mean, the rental mowers are in fairly good shape, because we have like four which are at the end of the life cycle, but we have another four which we recently got like about a year ago. So, that's in good shape. We also have the bake-up equipment. Now, as part of this particular cost, we need the areas excluded from this contract are Meadow Park, East Meadow Park, Marina Park, Howard Pond, Elk Lanyard, Home and Promare, Mashwater, and Home Station. Those are the ones who are not part of this. We're still maintaining, we're still cutting that.
How many acres is this bid in terms of?
For the open spaces, you've got about 40.9 acres. And for the store owner management part, you've got like 34.9 acres.
34.9?
Yeah. That's just the part. The part's a lot bigger, so we're just maybe, we're keeping it in house.
Okay. Well, give us an analysis, and we'll make a decision. Any other questions for Dan, or Brian?
No, but I will be looking forward to reading that analysis.
And you're also gonna have to include what's gonna cost us to keep those certain areas to maintain in cost and labor and all that. That's gonna... Because that's not a cost that we're gonna be losing.
Thank you. Lou, you're on. You guys can take your time up there, Dan. You're good. Yeah, they're good. You're on, Lou.
The American Commissioners of the Town of Elton proclaiming Juneteenth in the Town of Elton. Whereas on January 1st, 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation declared that all slaves shall be then and then once again free, that the executive government of the United States, including the military and naval authority thereof, will recognize and maintain the freedom of such persons, and will do no act or acts to oppress such persons or any others in any efforts they may make for their actual freedom. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, the last vestiges of slavery fell on the founder, Warden Ranger, delivered in red General Order Number 3 in the remote area of Galveston, Texas, declaring that all enslaved people in Texas were free. Whereas whether called manumission, the day of freedom day, or Juneteenth, the stay is marked by celebrations that began in community churches in the South and which have grown throughout the United States. And whereas while our country has come far in the present days of slavery, we must continually commit ourselves to recognize that we are still with God and equal in his eyes. Now therefore, in behalf of the mayor and commissioners of citizens of Elton, under the authority vested in me as the mayor of the Town of Elton, I hereby declare 19th of June, every June actually, as Juneteenth. In the Town of Elton, I encourage all our citizens to recognize the price paid by those who spent their lives in slavery and those who fought against it, and to raise our collective voices against violence and injustice.
We have a motion to accept Proclamation P. 47, 2024. So, moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Also, you could probably add it. It's also Louis' George's birthday on June 19th.
That's why I thought you celebrated it.
I know. That's what we're doing.
Master ceremony.
Any other discussion on it?
No. The only other discussion is the committee that is putting that together has done it for Margaret's job, bringing more businesses from the community outreach into that. Also, I guess a highlight for a lot of people is that they are gonna be termed Bernard Purdy, who's been an outstanding drummer for most of his life, having lived here, went to school here. He's returned here for the mural on the wall in the community center. And Mary Jo had him here before she passed on numerous times, when he had his musicians downtown. So, that should be a treat for a lot of people who either remember him or not.
Is that the signs for Elton?
It is. We're doing the celebration at the Elton Community Center. And, you know, I'm very proud to say I think we were one of the first municipalities in the state of Maryland to recognize it. If not, if not, if not the first. So, I think that I feel very honored to be around you folks that made that decision. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor. Motion carries.
Next item I have is a fire technical services contract with Faberganza. The board, I believe, is going to support a Fourth of July fireworks display in Meadow Park. It's been done for so many years, and it's enjoyed by so many people in the community and around the community. People come from far and wide. And this year, we can do it at the cost of $21,000. So, if the board wants to continue this tradition of fireworks, they have to accrue the cost of $21,000.
Well, I have to tell you, we started this tradition many, many, many years ago, and I think people do look forward to it. And I think the last few years, I think it's been actually better moving it the way that we moved it, and people could gather around the downtown areas, the ballparks, the Big Elk Mall, Marina Park, and so forth. It's in the budget. Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
I make a motion to move forward.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Some people may not know it, but if we lose that July 4th date, we'll never ever get it back, because everybody's waiting to grab that 4th July date. So, that's why it's important that we do continue to have this and try to stay on top of it as much as we can. But hopefully, it'll give us a discount next year.
Well, I would also say it's nice that the 4th is, I think, on a Thursday this year. And it's good. this year and, uh, it's good. Now you jinxed it. Any other discussion on this? We had a motion and a second to move forward with the service contract for $21,000. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Fireworks are in Elton, July 4th.
Woo, woo, woo.
That's all I have, Ron.
Thank you, Lou. Hey, I wanted to, uh, I, I think we've discussed this a few different times. I know that, uh, there's a walkway that's between Cecil Bank and the PNC property. Uh, I did have a discussion today and I can't disclose who I spoke to about someone acquiring the PNC building. Uh, they had asked the question, uh, who owns the section between PNC and Cecil Bank? And I remember the old days, it was Wade Street, I think.
Well, it was, we just remember it. Right. It was ten and off or right through the way down. CNT Bank.
And I think we looked this up and if I'm not mistaken, it's joint ownership of both of those properties, but could we, could someone firm that up for me so I can get back to this perspective? Because they want to doctor it up if they work with Cecil Bank and make something very nice there. I think it's, it's all good stuff. Uh, the, uh, one thing that's been on the agenda and one of the things that, as I said, I don't, I don't really enjoy the social media as much as a lot of people enjoy it, but one thing that we did put on there, uh, there was some discussion about, uh, retiring the major facility fees and then there was, uh, many, uh, there was, uh, a lot of response back on social media, you know, what's the town doing? Why do they want to get rid of major facility fees and so forth? And, uh, so we decided we were going to discuss it tonight for anyone that had any discussion in regards to major facility fees. And I don't know how many are here to talk about major facility fees. I'm looking around, I don't see anyone that's maybe here for major facility fees, but I wanted to kind of give my two cents worth if I could. Uh, we've dragged this thing out a lot and, uh, the major facility fees, we, in 2017, I think it was 17 or was it 19? Louis? Seven, 17. See, I'm getting bad on my dates, this is bad. Uh, normally I'm pretty sharp with this, but we suspended the major facility fees for a two-year window. What that two-year window did is it, uh, it allowed us to try to do some economic development and attempt to, uh, bring new business into our community. And I will tell you, uh, whether you like it or not, it was one of the reasons why we were able to attract Southfield's, uh, project here. Uh, and, and I'm very proud of that project. Uh, and, and you'll see it as it starts to develop, it's going to be a wonderful thing for people that's been around here for a long time that, that want to see, uh, uh, things for our youth to do, for places that where we can go out and, uh, enjoy ourselves rather than heading to Middletown, for example. The, uh, major facility fees that we're talking about, I think there's a little misnomer in there. The major facility fees are, uh, not impact fees per, per se, but they are fees that, uh, we collect from not only the homeowner, uh, but developers that come in and, uh, pay for what we call a hookup fee. It's a hookup fee to be able to hook up to the town's water and to hook up to the town's wastewater. Doesn't matter who you are, whether you're a builder or a homeowner, if you wanted to build a single family house, guess what? You're going to have to pay for that hookup fee, water and/or sewer. The mayor commissioners up here, uh, we use that, uh, major facility fee money for infrastructure, water lines, sewer lines, and it does help, uh, to pay for debt service on, uh, major projects. Uh, it's, it's to help pay for, uh, uh, some of the major projects. So for example, the Town of Elton did a wastewater treatment plant back in 2004. Uh, we were able to get, uh, state and federal funding, where's the 2007?
It would cost 40 million for the plant upgrade and 18 million in grants and 22 million in debt service to the state that we're paying way over, a little over 5 million yet in principal balance.
So we've been, so we've been able to pay back, uh, pretty much all that debt other than five or six million dollars during that time, but we were able to get a, we didn't use, uh, major facility money to pay that down or pay it off, we went and got a loan for that. The, uh, uh, what I'd like to do is to encourage, uh, more development, good, bad or indifferent, some people may not agree with me, but if you don't have the property tax dollars coming in, they can go into your general fund, that's when you start hearing people saying, well, we may have to raise your taxes. The general fund money is your taxes that come in that we can use for, for day in, day out business. Uh, major facility money is specifically for infrastructure cost. It doesn't affect your water rate, your sewer rate directly. It doesn't affect, uh, anything in, in regards to any of that, but what does affect you and your homes is the, uh, real property tax that we need to collect. So to use an example, if we were to waive, uh, hookup fees for the next couple of years, it's, it's, takes about four years in property tax revenue to collect that major facility money back, if that makes any calculation sense. So in 2002, 2003, we annexed a large parcel of land on the south side of Elton. There was no development, there hasn't been any development until now, in 2017 and the start of it, or 2018. But what encouraged that was knowing that there wasn't going to be any type of hookup fee for that. Doesn't sound like much, but when you take, uh, a number of $15,000 per hookup, it does make a different, difference in the overall number. But could you imagine if we didn't have the hookup fees in 2002 and this could have been built? The dollar amounts of revenue that the town could have collected, $7 million a year all the way up to today, certainly makes up more than the cost of, uh, the hookup fees. So the, uh, one thing I, I'd like to leave the board with thinking about is could you imagine if Del Marva Power charged you a hookup fee when you asked for electricity? You know, you think, what's that have to do with what I'm saying now? It's very similar. It's a utility. We, we've got the customer locked in and we're asking for more dollars out of them. So I think it's been pretty clear, my feelings on major facility fees for the last 10 years, that I don't like them. But now I will also say that, uh, as I'm talking about this, I wouldn't be against an impact fee. And the reason why I'm, I'm spinning this around a little bit, because an impact fee can be used for other things other than water and sewer projects. If we collect an impact fee instead of a major facility fee, we could use that for road construction, we could use it for recrea- recreation centers, uh, we could use it for things other than water and sewer. So my first proposal that I'm going to ask is the board to take action on suspending the major facility fees as proposed a couple of weeks ago with what ordinance number that was?
05. 05. Bring it to the board for introduction.
Okay. I, I'd like to see that as a introductory piece, 05-2024, and it was for, uh, uh,
Two-year period?
Yeah, for a two-year period reduction of major facility fees.
Across the board?
Across the board. Now,
Wait a minute, it was designed for residential development, not for emergency.
Yes, as, as was presented.
Of course, the board for everything would be industrial and everything.
I'm sorry, I meant across the town.
Yeah, it was as, as presented, ordinance 05-2024 that everyone reviewed here. Uh, I just wanted to either move forward with, uh, a deration here or, uh, just let it get away, but I also want to say, this, this is part one and then there's a part two. Does anyone have any feelings about this? Can I, can I call for a motion on 05-2024 or do we, do you want to introduce that, Lou?
It's, it's about those ordinance to follow process that's described in the charter, you have to have it introduced and we can introduce it on the 12th.
There we go.
So it's just next week.
I, I thought we introduced it several weeks ago.
You pulled it off.
We never introduced it, okay. Very good. So let's get that on the agenda. Well, let me ask this question. Is there enough support to move forward with this? Can I?
I, I make motion that we move forward. I brought this up a couple, I thought a month ago, it wasn't a couple of weeks, because, um, just like you said, in order to bring, uh, businesses in, I wanted to be more business friendly with the, uh, developers, not just Southfield, as some people stated, but, uh, one of the key things was, was, um, I believe in honoring what we say. We asked them to come in based on waiver fees, but no one remembered that, but I brought it up to everyone's attention that it was said and it stuck real close to me because I don't like to say I heard and I didn't hear. So I'm, I'm making motion that we go ahead and, um, bring it to, uh, motion for adoption. Is adoption or?
Well, Lou says we have to advertise it, so we have to advertise it.
The only impact that you'll have on, uh, revenue loss here is, you know, it goes over a million a year with a wastewater treatment plan. So if you don't have revenue for that, you have to, you have to increase the sewer fund to all set.
Well, the, the budget we just accepted,
We may have it for a couple of years and then,
Well, I was going to say the budget that we just accepted only had $440,000 in major facility fees collected for the year.
That's it. That's not true. Now, how much do we have, 5 million in there?
Well, we got over 5 million in it, that's right.
We've got it covered for now.
Well, well, listen, I'm taking a straw, I don't need a motion, Earl, but I, I need to take a straw vote so we can get it introduced, because I don't want to introduce it if I don't have support to move forward with it.
Well, what, what happened to your part two?
I'm going to tell you in the part two here.
Well, you want an answer before I hear part two?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll give you an answer.
Okay, very good. And I'm not opening up the floor for questions on this. So Rob, do you have a, are you, you tell me, are you?
I am okay with it. You know, from a business point of view, this makes sense. We are going to do this one way or the other, but the longer we delay it, the longer we delay the return from it. We need to get this over. We've been chasing our tails for two or three years now. Let's take a shot.
All right, Charles?
I think I got three votes, so, but I'll ask your opinion.
Tell me where the three are. I got, I got, I got three, right here.
Two is left.
I got two left. We did all, all, as before, you know, I'm favorable for it, but, you know, through this whole process, we have not gotten information that we should have and you all know that. We come in there, we meet, we say one thing and then another day, somebody else comes up with written documentation, we come back with something else and then again, somebody else comes back with whatever. And, you know, I'm to the point that I, I agree with it, but we don't need that to happen again if you're going to sit here and talk about either straw votes, you want to do it and then all of a sudden come next Tuesday, oh, we got something else and it changes. It's either yay or nay. Right now, I'm yay. But then somebody might try to put us back in the middle again, then we'd be nay. But anyhow, you know what I'm talking about.
Gene, you have any comments?
Oh, jeez. Oh, my. Um, I'm anxious to hear part B. I know, I know how. Um, I said a long time ago when we were hashing this out, tell me what our five-year capital improvement plan is. I've not seen one. And if you're going to talk about impact fees, perhaps, I would be in favor of that because I, I like applying these fees to every part of the town that development affects, not just the water and sewer fund, but just to move forward without enough information for me, I have to say no.
Very good. So Lou, we have enough to introduce it at the next meeting. And, uh, part two, everyone wants to know what part two. So part two is, I am in favor of impact fees. Uh, I'd like to, uh, I think the impact fee would give us, uh, the ability to use these dollars, uh, a little differently than what we can use them today. And I would, uh, say to the, the board, I'd like to, for Louis, maybe to research impact fees for us and, uh, come up with a dollar amount on those impact fees because I think it's, uh, uh, we, we can justify that. I think the, the challenge that I continue to have is that these major facility fees are only used for, uh, two items which we can't necessarily have any influence over. And I think that a lot of times we make these rules because, um, the, the future board may not be, it may have to be somewhere along the line that one of the board members couldn't make a decision and they, uh, said, let's put this rule into effect that says that you can only use them for X and Y. And I don't think that that's right. I, I'd like to have the ability while I'm sitting here to be able to say, okay, we need dollars to go to the right or we need dollars to go to the left. Now, not to say an impact fee can't be used for water and sewer, but it can also be used for a lot of other things. And maybe could be just changing the language, but I still want to have that two-year window, but I'd be happy to move forward, implement those impact fees.
So you're saying basically it's possible to change major facility hookup fees to an impact fee?
I'd like to hit, I'd like to know that also. That is correct.
But does a dollar now change? We don't know that either.
We don't know. I mean, as Charlie said, I didn't want to confuse everyone, I had a other couple of suggestions tonight, but I think we move forward with that ordinance as, uh, I think that we have the vote for and, uh, we're going to suspend it for two years.
Oh, well, we get confused again.
I'm going to confuse you again. I'll have something else to read. Well, thank you. I didn't have anything else, uh, on my plate. Gene?
Oh, no.
Charles?
I don't have anything, but it's nice to be working with the town again.
I'm proud to have Charlie Givens on the board. Earl? Not so much Earl, but go ahead.
Me, took words right up, but anyway, I was just happy to be back and a part of the board and I can't say a comment that was on my mind when we stopped my mayor all leaving in a couple of years. This has probably been one of the best boards I've ever served. Uh, I've been here, like I said, 20 years. We usually have, hey, it's not good. I've already said good and ugly, even arguing. I don't think we had one argument.
We disagree.
And, and Gene can, but anyway. I'm just kidding. No, we haven't had an argument up here. We disagree, we sometimes agree, but then we have not, never walked away looking at each other and howling about, I don't want to come back this time again or this day again, but thank you guys for serving with me.
Congratulations.
Robert?
I am very grateful for Commissioner Givens and Commissioner Piner for taking another term. We need them. We're in very trying times in the town right now and their experience is going to help us through. Um, the only things I wanted to bring up were the people walking on Main Street along the fence by the Howard House is still an issue. I witnessed somebody trip, uh, just today and they, I don't know why they insist on walking down the fence side of the street instead of crossing over, but, uh, I wish that we could do something there. Another thought that I had just today was I took my lunch out by the, the creek out back by Howard Street and I'm sitting there, it's a nice little setting, you know, I'm sitting there eating, two more vehicles pulled in. Two more vehicles pulled in. I get to looking around, and I'm thinking, "This would be a nice little picnic area." So who do we turn to for that? Out by the pavilion and the creek, the little inlet that comes in off Howard Street.
There's a lot of people that sit there.
There's a lot of grassy areas there, there are nice shady trees, and we provide them with the... I mean, we should utilize really the only waterfront that we have here in town.
We could do that to flood plain, I understand. Or... Anything else?
No, that's all. I would like to pursue these issues.
Absolutely. Take a look at that for us and see how we come up. Okay, this is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for anything, anyone that has anything good for the town? Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address, or come on down.
Well, my name is Jeanette Witten, 310 Curtis Avenue, and I have a question for the Alliance design thing. Did you guys look at the back of Main Street buildings?
We had started just on Main Street.
Just making sure, because that's pretty rough back there as well. And we have our functions back there and use those parking spots and the whole... Just checking to see at the back of the buildings, we're going to be part of that review.
For right now, we're just focusing on Main Street, but that will hopefully be in the future.
Thank you so much. Come on down. Mr. Khan, state your name and...
Yeah, let me hand you the...
All right, very good. I remember this young fellow from our cricket days. And listen, I know we're going to have cricket here soon. I think that there is...
Something else.
Yes, all right. Thank you. All right, sit up there and tell us what you got. Ever since our first meeting, I watch cricket all the time now.
Yeah, and you know, Cricket World Cup is happening right now in USA. So some games are going on in New York City. A modular cricket stadium has been built with a cost of $35 million. So a lot of activities going on. So anyway, very quickly, for the town people, my name is Shuja Khan. I have a residential investment in the town of Elton, but at the same time, I live in North Delaware, and my main bread and butter is IT. IT consulting that I do. And currently, my clients are the state and local governments. The state of Oklahoma is my current client. Anyway. Is there a way we can connect to that?
Yeah, you might be able to connect it. And he wants to connect to the... Presentation?
It would take hardly five minutes for us in the town.
Louis says hungry.
Had the other social engineer in here with you.
We'll have it hooked up. So you can talk a little bit about the run, so you want to do a bit?
Yes.
It'll be hooked up here in a second.
Very quickly, so previously, you know, in 2017, we wanted to bring cricket. And we needed some infrastructure development in the Meadows Park. And the park is like, there are five different fields we wanted, and we wanted to do some development. It's a surface called pitch, where you pitch the ball on it, and it's different than the baseball. But anyway, we wanted to have it approved for all five fields, but unfortunately, I think that park also has, state has some say in it, so we only got an approval for one field. But anyway, we will talk about that, but this is something new. You know, sports has been my passion, and doing the volunteer work, it's kind of grew up, grew big, that I've been involved in cricket a lot. And then recently, I have launched a sports social media company. You will see it down in my further slides. So for the town, you know, I love this town. As I said, I have a residential investment here, and I want to bring, do more investment here. So this is an urban run, which is a five-kilometer run, which we are planning for the town as of now. We have a proposed date for October 26th. And the park, and the race, the race name is I Run. We have a cause behind it, which is mental health awareness for the people. And in general, it talks about where exactly we'll be starting from, what are the benefits that town is going to get, and other things. So I'll go slide by slide.
You know, before you go, I just want to throw something out there. I was looking at the running rate where you have to propose.
Yeah.
So it's a 5K?
It is a 5K.
Does it specifically have to be that route, or could it be... Because we have a 5K route.
Well, if you have a preferred route that the town prefers where they can manage the traffic very well, then we'll go for it. This is what we thought, that, hey, Meadow Park is the best part to start, and Meadow Park is a good place to end. And the route we thought is that, hey, we actually drove through it, and then we said, "Okay, let the mayor's office be the midpoint of it. That's where the water station will be, the way you folks can handle it, and then they turn." And then they use the little bit of the downtown, which is East Main Street, and then turn left, turn right on the south, and then turn left on Howard, and then Delaware Avenue, and then they will enter the Meadow Park. But if you have something else to recommend us, please go and do let us know.
Well, let's listen to your... We'll listen to the proposal here.
Yeah, so we talked about in general, but it involves the community. This race is for 13 years and above. The cause is, we want to have a mental and physical health awareness here. Some of the proceeds of the race will be given to a local facility, which are involved in that particular cause. They're in, and then participant, as I said, is 13 and over. We expect, you know, we will use all kind of avenue to do marketing, social media marketing, billboard marketing, and we hope that we can get 1,000 participants. Local town, of course, and then nearby towns. And the way we will market it, people from a little bit far can also come here, just to give exposure to the town. Route I have already mentioned, the fee would be $30, but that is going to include a T-shirt and a bib that we do, and of course, our waters will be here. And the preferred date I have is October 26th. Race time is 11:00 AM. And based on the calculation and the research we have done, five-kilometer race is basically kind of 3.1 miles. So everyone is pretty much done within an hour or so. So that is when we would be needing the traffic management. And we are giving away prize money for $1,500. So based on these kind of races, we have done our research. There are age categories between 13 and 17, 18 and 29 years, and 30, 39, 40, 49, and 50 plus. So each, within each age group, male and female, they'll two prizes. The winner will get 100, and the second will get 50. And then in the end, yeah.
You were doing good.
No, you know, I'm much better off with the slide, so everybody can see. So I am... And I thank you all for giving us time. Thank you so much. So I just go through the event highlights. Anyway, I keep on talking. You know, technology always comes in.
Of course it does.
Okay, so inclusive, we have some key features. And then, of course, participant, we talk about price category, we talk about price denomination. And then the race course, I've already talked about. Tech integration is right there. You know, we, as I said, you know, we have recently launched a sports social media, so it will be, everything will be integrated with that. People can see the live streaming and everything on it. Yeah, even the registration will also be done on that, that particular. So there's a post-race celebration at the Meadows Park. As of now, this is the park that we chose. The benefits the community will get, you know, of course, there's engagement and recognition. You know, Elton will be recognized. There are certain websites within USA, which keep track of all the urban races and the other races happening across the country. And unfortunately, Elton name was not there. So we said, "Okay, let's bring Elton in those major websites, where this town can be really recognized for these kind of races." Okay, and then charitable cause, recognition, we talked about. Of charitable causes, as I mentioned, that some proceeds will go to the charity for the cause we have it. And then at the same time, sponsor visibility. You know, those who will be coming as sponsors, they will also get visibility. So we will search for the sponsor. We have done some homework. They are interested in the companies who really like this kind of races. Then festival, we just go through it. In the end, here's an opportunity where the local vendors can, you know, come and set up their booths. We have done some homework. We later tell how many the vendor booths set up will be, which will be very minimal. And this is an opportunity for the town people to come. And those who are just as soon as they can come and have the...
This is a big festival.
Yeah. Okay, economic impact. Showcasing the town, then financial gain is there. And then the smaller business will have the opportunity to demonstrate their business. At the same time, there will be job creation, at least related to the event. And then corporate involvement. Large population can see this opportunity and can probably come in and do other investment in the town as well. You know, just more visibility to the town. And through multiple ways, as we have. We will be using a social media company to really advertise our product this race. So this is the preferred route. We thought we drove through it. You're entering from the Meadow Park, and then you make a left on, I believe, that's Howard Street. And then you're turning and pretty much reaching the midpoint is the mayor's office, then turning back, coming back into the East Main Street, and then there's another south street you make right, and then pretty much coming back. And, okay, this is the critical part. This is where we need the support from the mayor's office, commissioners, police chief, 5G, all the chiefs who are here to support us. And then at the same time, community engagement is needed. Whether we chose October is a great one, you know. And then we chose October 26th, which is a weekend day. And morning start time is just that everybody can pretty much come in the morning, get on the race, and pretty much done, then continue with the festival. You know, conclusion is overall, community involvement, taking care of the health, and supporting the cause. And towards the end, there's a festival? Okay, pretty much, I have gone through it, so I'm more into IT consulting, but then over the time, I've been involved in schools and cricket. Cricket is my passion, but now, you know, at the same time, I have created this race. And Mr. Ngan is my international director, so he'll be watching this, I know, because he had another country at the same time, and then he won next night. So I've been a part of a board of cricket in Canada. So, you know, we have a major cricket tournament that has happened, and this is a cake-carrying ceremony. I've been also inducted in the Hall of Fame for cricket. So in Connecticut is the Hall of Fame. And I've been inducted for starting the very first cricket league in the Philadelphia area. So those who don't know, there are cricket clubs which established in Philadelphia in 1855. They're still there. And when the British, they lost the war, okay? That's when that game died in the Philadelphia region. You know, George Washington, our president, his troops were in the... There was a partner, the king of Russia.
Valley Forge.
Valley Forge. So, Commissioner, man, you're good. So, yeah, so, you know, so during when the George Washington troops were there in the Valley Forge Park, during those days, they played cricket just to kill their time. So just wanted to give you a quick history about cricket in Philadelphia. So that's it, you know, pretty much general. The rest are my certificates of... The state of Connecticut has also recognized me for my services that I've done with cricket.
Well, listen, thank you guys for the presentation. We will run this by staff. We'll run it by the alliance and see if there's any conflict on those days. If we agree to it, that route will not work. It'll, we'll have a route for you. But let us take a look at it for the next week, and we'll come back with some suggestions.
Yeah, sure, thank you so much.
But thank you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for listening.
Okay, anyone else have anything to say? Come on down.
I live in Elton Heights, the background from...
And give me your name. Say it. Say my name.
303 Robert... I'm 303 Elton Boulevard.
Thank you.
I bought my house in 2017, and every time it rains, I panic. Because my, you've seen it, it floods terribly. And the only thing I can think of that would make that go away is a curb.
So Dan, can you get and take a look over at... I never did get your...
303 Elton Boulevard.
I got it.
Mary Webb.
Mary Webb. Could you send, go take a look at it personally and see if there's any suggestions we could do, maybe to help out there?
There's a...
If it's on any of the town property?
There's a drain there on your property, not mine.
Okay.
And I maintain that property, but it's not mine.
Okay.
And I think the town's been out there four times in seven years to clean that drain. I'm the one who cleans that drain.
Okay. Thank you.
Because, well, I want my house to...
Yes, I understand. Ms. Webb, do you live by the speed bump there where it falls off?
I live right, I'm right on the alley.
Yeah, I know.
On the last...
Yes.
So you'll get with Dan is right there. Wave your hand, Dan, so she can see you. Okay, Dan's going to come out, and we're going to take a look at it, see if there's something we can do.
Oh, and another thing.
Yes.
Can anybody, just anybody in Elton Heights have a business outside?
Like an in-home business?
I don't know what kind of a business.
Yeah, you would have to come into the planning department or something.
I don't know if it's a, if he's doing mechanical work on cars. The same cars are there all the time, but they're constantly changing the tags on them. He almost ran into me the other day, and I'm thinking, "God, I don't think this guy has insurance."
I would say, if you wouldn't mind, after the meeting, come up here and tell us what the address you think that is, and we'll have the chief and/or our building inspector go out and take a look. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? No, I've got it. Dave?
Hi, you know me, David Maschiano. Mine's also flood-related and parking-related. So I live on West Main Street, and, well, you know, you're talking about parking. You know, limited time-wise, Main Street. There's parking out back of where I live, on Howard Street, in that big floodplain.
Yep.
So what I was wondering is if there could be some way that residents would be able to park their cars not in that floodplain, to, you know, run into cases where our cars get caught in the flooding. Somebody had suggested maybe like a yearly fee thing, where you pay like a sticker on your car. You like, make a permit. Maybe reserve parking for residences. I don't know if that would be more complicated or not. Just any kind of solution to try to get rid of that threat of losing your car.
And listen, we're asking for solutions also. The challenge that we have with folks parking on Main Street, if you live in the apartments, it's a challenge, because, you know, if, it used to be, I can tell you, I lived on West Main, right between, if you knew the building that they tore down before you get to the Colonel's, and now it used to be the pool hall? the Colonel's and, and now it used to be the pool hall. Remember the pool hall? I lived in the building next door and there wasn't, if, if I didn't get up on Tuesdays and Thursdays at a timely fashion, town of Elton gave me a ticket because a street sweeper comes out, was coming out. And I got many a tickets back in the day. And we've been a little, I don't want to say the word lax, but we've, we've given a lot of leeway for residents today. But I'd like to find a solution to.
Yeah, I've gotten a couple of tickets myself.
I say we build a parking garage back there.
Excellent.
Come on, let's get it going.
By all means. Yeah, to be honest, whatever the solution is, as long as I don't have to worry about the flood at my car, I'm good.
Well, listen, because we do have some other challenges. One of the other challenges is that if anyone's never been by the post office, I think everyone here has. There's, I think they told me that one day there's about 80 employees and there's no parking. And they keep growing and growing and growing. So they're parking all along West Main Street also before they, before anyone wakes up in the morning. They're out there and parked. And it's a challenge. There is definitely a need of some sorts for some type of parking on that side of town.
But in the meantime of, you know.
Outside floodplain.
Something being like physically done, like a parking garage. Was there a possibility of getting some kind of, you know, like a sticker pass or anything like that? Maybe you can prove that you are a resident and then pay for, you know, whatever fee it is to be able to keep your car out of the floodplain.
But where, do you have an idea where?
Well, first thought, of course, is Main Street, but there's also the parking lot that's just all above it on West Main Street.
Municipal lot?
Yeah, that, maybe in there. I can't think of many other places off the top of my head.
Dave's concern is that there have been a few times where no threat of flood is known. And you wake up in the morning and the parking lot has flooded overnight.
Yes, I've just happened to glance out my back window and see the waters in my tires and I'll throw some clothes on and run down.
Yeah, and one of my other employees barely escaped one night because it came quick.
Yeah, that's the main thing is that it happens in the moment's notice, so you never know once it happens.
I would like to find a solution. Unfortunately, parking is an issue downtown. And forcing the parking has nothing to do with raising revenue and more to do with opening up spots for our businesses and their customers. But I would love to find a solution for some of the residents. Not the business owners per se, we can park out back, you know, but the residents, they're in a different spot.
Well, listen, I would tell you, I would tell you, we have a municipal parking lot right across the street here, but no one's gonna park up here and walk down there.
Especially if you have groceries.
It just ain't gonna happen.
Especially if you have groceries. I mean, you've got a parking.
Still got a lot of flood.
The Elton Music Place still, and then back there, that's the, you can park back there.
Yes.
That's a municipal lot with no meters.
Yeah, so.
About that?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, so behind Elton Music Hall, of course, if you can get a parking spot there, there's, it's, it's a municipal parking lot.
I thought that that was time parking as well during a certain part of the day.
No, that's not time.
The entire parking lot?
It's all free.
Oh, well.
That's your solution.
Metered lot, you have the Elton Music Hall?
There's no metered lot there. We had meters in there.
Well, I don't know about meters, but the last time I looked, there was a sign that's very similar to the one you see on Main Street, where it's between this hour and this hour, you can only be here for a certain amount of time.
I think we need to take a look at it. We've never enforced that one. No, we've never enforced that. We'll take a look at it, but I think it's, it's, that's a free parking, that's a municipal parking lot, it's free.
If it's not being enforced, then, you know, forget what I said, but.
I, I'd like to see if there's a sign because it's a municipal parking lot. And it's just like Howard, the one behind there, we've never, it's a free parking.
Yeah, the only, the only confusion was the posted sign. I don't, I don't know if it's meant for Main Street, but it does appear to be for.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Thank you, Dave.
Well, and while we're talking about this, it might be for the crossing guard that was gonna take on the extra hours and do parking enforcement, has just tendered for resignation. And so I don't actually have anybody getting ready to come out and do parking enforcement. So we have a little bit of time while we're researching some of these options. I don't want people to be panicked, right, that we're gonna be out there. We were just trying to give people notice because that was our plan, but now we just got that notice, so.
JT, I think.
Because, because really, the thing that planes is that we could be out there, but, but I don't have somebody dedicated out there doing the parking enforcement right now.
JT, I think you had something to say?
Yes, actually, I want to go off of the parking also, but I have something to add. I'm JT, I live in Patriots Glen. The parking, I think, if you could find something for the tenants over there would be great. My daughter works downtown and recently she just had a scare, so she's not even comfortable parking in the back of the building right now, if she has to come in at night. But then on with, you were talking about the paving by the hospital. Why don't you take the cobblestone now? I think it's such a nice little feature right there. It's in front of the hospital, it slows people down a little bit. And I know that they redid the streets in Patriots Glen, which, you know, looks great with the asphalt. But we've also got some puddles from it too. And it seems like the cobblestone would just hold up so much better.
So when the, I, I can only go by when the cobblestone was put in years ago. It was a traffic calming device. It was placed in there, but I know the, the scheme of the things, they were wanting to close it all down to make it a campus type around the hospital. It never happened. But I think the reason why we're pulling the cobblestone up now is it's a complete opposite. I think that the, the folks that are going through there on emergency situations, the bouncing around on the cobblestone and additionally, I would say, the walkers. And there was some damage done to the cobblestones. Am I correct in saying that?
That's exactly it.
A lot of sinking going on.
I talked to a couple of EMTs, they told me that, that exact thing.
It was bouncing the people that were in.
They settled and they're uneven and it's too funky.
But it definitely slows down traffic.
Yeah.
Sarah, I think you had something, nothing? Anyone else have anything to say? Come on up. See, I got a lot of people want to say something like this. Come on down.
Hi. Hello. So.
Doing well?
So of course, a lot of you know us, Justin Scott. We are coming to you for guidance. We at Maryland Beer Company specifically received notice from a town inspector that contacted our landlord on our being a harvest host. Now, if you don't know anything about harvest hosts, harvest hosts has brought us business as well as everyone in the town. Harvest Host is a network of farms, wineries, breweries, distilleries, golf courses, churches and other attractions that invite RVers to stay overnight, giving visitors a safe and convenient and unique place to stay. RVers are, must be just that. It has to be a self-contained vehicle. There can be no pop-up campers, no tents, no sleeping in cars, no trucks, Jeeps or anything of that nature. You have to be in a self-contained vehicle. The RV must have interior toilets and built-in holding tanks. The Harvest Hosts, being us, Maryland Beer Company, do not offer electric hookup or water hookup of any kind. They are only allowed to stay one night. And they must go to a camping facility that allows them to dump their water. There's no dumping of anything at our locations. All the cooking that they may do has to be inside and it cannot cook on grills. They cannot have open fire pits or anything of that nature. Please note that surrounding areas, including Dove Valley, Winery and Rising Sun, Midnight Oil Brewing in Newark, Independent Brewing in downtown Bel Air are some of the few harvest hosts in this surrounding area. We are attracting people to stay overnight and visit our town and our town's attractions. I can't tell you the amount of times that I've had people come in and say, what else is there to do in this town? And I sent them to downtown. We've had people come and stay, we've read some of the reviews, they're going to the Elton Music Hall when they opened. They're going down and they're visiting Central Tavern, they're going down and visiting Elk River and Sport for breakfast in the morning. So they're not just coming to us. I have some people that will walk up to Roma's Pizza or Enzo's Pizza at night and have dinner there and then come down, have a nightcap and they go into their RVs. Other places around the town that allow RVers are corporate businesses like Cracker Barrel and Walmart. We all know that you can go into a Cracker Barrel and nine times out of ten, in the back of the lot, you see an RV parked there or Walmart. The only difference is, is that they have no clue of who is staying there. You just pull up in your RV at any of those corporate businesses and you stay the night. They ask no questions, they have no information. Us being a harvest host, we have a network. They have to pay to be a part of this. Either that or no harvest host sees any money of this. But it tells us, number one, who the person is, their name, their home address, their license plate number and a phone number to contact them. So that if there is any issues, which is we have never seen, then they can be contacted. We can contact local authorities and try to have it resolved quickly and swiftly. They. Currently, before we were given notice, we would have anywhere between one to three RVs a week. Maybe three one night and then none the rest of the week. But it's been a huge thing that has generated revenue for not only us, but surrounding businesses and built relationships. They can easily keep going on 95 and go on to the next spot. Or they can easily go off to 95 and stop at Cracker Barrel, which is they're not close enough to come into our downtown area. We have met so many people. During COVID, we had people that were stranded here from Ireland. They came over to have a family vacation and then told they couldn't get on the plane to go back. And they said, what better way to teach our kids about American history than renting an RV and going across country? And that's what they did and they harvest hosts doing that. So we have had a ton of things being generated by this. We do not get a cut, like I said, we don't get a cut of that fee that they do. That's a yearly fee that they pay to be a part of that. And it's a more secure list of people that do this. I, mother visitors are coming in for a quick night or are passing through. The rest of the, rest of the one may stay at Elk and Town Events, we can offer that. We've had people that have come and stayed with us and then were having their fall fest downtown. And they, that's why they came into town, because they had family that lived here but didn't have room for them. But they had an RV and knew they could stay that night, go downtown, visit, do the attractions, come back, pack up their RV and they go home. So it's not just us that were benefiting from this. So I'm hoping that the board can help us on giving us guidance on how we can continue to do this without getting into any trouble zoning or anything. Because I've done research and I can't find exactly where it says we're not allowed.
Is your landlord saying it's okay?
Yeah, our landlord is perfectly.
So we just, we just changed our law recently that allowed an RV to park for 24 hours. Wouldn't that be?
Yeah, we did.
We just, we just approved it for 24 hours.
That was on private property.
So on, so it was on a roadway.
It was on a roadway.
So what we had is we had someone living on the roadway and, and we did an ordinance to moving on the best that we could. And I don't know how that plays with private property. Your private property.
I mean, there's multiple businesses there as well.
I mean, we have people, you know, they're going down to Central, they're going to Elk River.
If someone visited your business and they were there for 24 hours, it's probably a good thing that they had the RV to stay in, quite frankly.
We had a couple of years where it was a good thing that we walked them back.
Because I can tell you, there's many times I drank your beer and I was seeing double and feeling single.
I know. I mean, Rob, that was when you were like.
I know, I know.
But like I said, I don't want to do.
Well, let us take a look at it. I, I think we'll give you a real quick answer. I don't, you guys, Louis, is there something I'm missing?
She's in the wrong forum, she needs to check this thing. I call it wrong well, they go through the zoning thing and then advise the board.
Yeah.
What were you being told? So I was told that a town inspector contacted my landlord. My landlord came to me and said, oh, act of today, which was right before Memorial Day, and then no more RVs are allowed in this lot. We're not allowed.
We had to cancel a lot of.
I have, I, I have been denying stays for probably the last week and a half.
Oh, no.
See, I guess what my question is, if I, if I pulled in with my car or my RV and I came to your establishment, even if I wasn't intending on staying the night, I don't see it where there's a hiccup there for that. Do you think, I mean.
I'm wondering if it's being interpreted.
Yeah, it could be interpreted a little different. Let us get, I'll get, we'll get an answer. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's kind of cool, really.
Yeah, we've had, we've had people, like, they come with their bicycles and they like down to Elk and Music Hall. We've had people that are very big runners and I'm not that, I like gear and that, so not a runner. But they, you know, do a run and they go into the heights and they come down and they hit Elk River and then run, you know, hot a couple beers or whatever, have lunch and then they run back. And then in the morning, you know, if they're, I don't know what you call them, but the kind that they tumble over or whatever.
Yeah.
They disconnect, they go have breakfast at Sport, come back, hook up.
I think it's a great idea. It's all it is.
And they're in the back parking lot, so if you're familiar with our lot, they go all the way in the back to where they're not really seen from the road. They're not an eyesore. I mean, I have, I think the.
But they're there for one night.
They're one, this, and it's not even a whole, for 24 hours, because we have opened to the rain. They have, usually around five o'clock, they cool in and by 9:00 AM, they're cooling out.
Yeah, I know where you're putting, you can't see it from the road. I think it's a great idea. I'm not familiar with this harvest.
Harvest Hosts.
It is such a cool thing.
What do, what do they do with the money that they collect?
So that's part of their keeping track of who's in there, I'm assuming, of who's like keeping the data and everything going. So like right now, I can pull up and say, Rob Mascherano is requesting a stay, these dates. And then I can, you know, look and see what your other stays were like. Are you, you know, I'm guessing it goes into the.
Do you have to, you have to approve it?
I have to approve it.
Oh, okay.
I have to approve each stay with them. So if there's an issue, I have every, I have contact information.
Is your site approved for a maximum number?
So our, we were told that we needed to have 60 designated parking slots for our business.
Well, ours, no, ours was 32.
Oh, ours was 33. The front lot is 60 and the back lot is another 30 spots. So we're way, I mean, the amount of parking.
No, I mean, are you approved through Harvest Hosts to have a certain number of RVs at your site?
Oh, yeah, we, so each host determines how many they'll take at a time. So I only say that I'll take three at a time if it is. But I think the only time I had that many out there was during COVID.
So you would not accept more than three?
Yeah. No. I don't know what Mr. George was saying. I need to talk to somebody else, I don't know.
Well, I would think.
There's a form I have to follow where in the format is to find out, give it a very explicit or descriptive information about what you're doing and then talk to the zoning administrator about it. If it's not a zoning issue, you don't have an issue.
Have you been to the zoning board?
No. I didn't know where to start. This is like.
Just the administrator?
I just started here, I didn't know what else to do.
Sound like you need to circle a little bit.
Okay.
And then get back, we'll get back to you.
Okay. Okay. I mean, if there is, I didn't see there was a zoning, like I said, so I was like, I didn't know what to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Scott.
Where we live is Walnut Hill, right?
Yes, Walnut Hill.
What happened to our water? Our water all of a sudden now is slimy, it's oily. When you wipe something down, you can go back to it and you can actually write in the film.
When did that start?
That started about a month, month and a half ago.
We can't even see the dogs.
Yeah, we're going to do bottled water.
Is this the first that you've reported to anyone?
Yeah, this is.
Well, listen, your address is.
214.
Walnut?
214 what? What's Mike Drive?
Mike Drive. And we'll have, we'll have someone from Infomart come right out and get in touch with you. That's not right. That's not.
What's the address?
214 Mike Drive.
They have to contact him. This'll take a sample.
Yes.
But you have to call Infomart.
Do you know if your neighbors have that problem?
They're, we're gonna have opposite schedules.
We're basically out of a newer bed, and it's, it's, it's off there.
Yeah, does it make any sense? Does it make? But we'll, we'll be right on it.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next. Pat.
Here to watch start. I'm just kidding. I'm just trying to remind everybody, this is coming Friday evening from 5:30 to 7:30, we're gonna be kicking off the Alliance, and group hosts will be kicking off the summer with our jump into June. It'll be activities for children, we'll have food vendors down there, and we'll have some musical entertainment, and everyone is invited, whether you're children, your grandchildren, if you're lucky, great grandchildren, and we will keep them entertained while you can just sit back and watch.
Perfect.
It's a free event. Free event, everything's free.
Jump into June, thanks, Pat. Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town? Okay, I'm looking at the Zoom meeting. Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that has anything to say for the good of the town? I think we're unmuting you now. Maybe?
No, no one's responding.
No one responded? All right, very good. This meeting is adjourned.